Well, thank you, everyone, for your patience. We've been in a closed session since 6:30. And this is the Board of Education meeting of October 26, 2020. And Charlie, if you can call the roll.
Ms. Drake?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Roby?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Westfall?
Present.
Mr. Kerberg?
Here. We have a quorum. If you can join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty-
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. All right. So jumping on down to 3.02 President's comments. So I will start off tonight that we have several special guests with us tonight to accept an award that would have normally been given last spring. That obviously couldn't happen at that time, but we still wanted to recognize and honor an individual, an outstanding, an honor and outstanding district parent. Our guests are here in the boardroom with us, and then we'll be leaving the meeting after we are done with this specific part of the agenda. We assure the audience watching this meeting online that our guests are socially distanced and wearing masks as required. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Hernandez.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kerberg. The Illinois chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, of which our district is a member, each year has a contest for communications to honor communications experts in various fields, including, obviously, those of us who work in the field, but also board members, district administrators, students, parents, and teachers. And so this year, we nominated one of our parents for this award, and I wanted to share it tonight with you. Unfortunately, we couldn't do this in May as we would have wanted to, but we wanted to share with you tonight that Mrs. Betsy Vincent is a winner, is the winner this year of the 2020 Distinguished Service Award of Excellence for her communications on behalf of District 202. So we'll give you the elbow bump. There we go. This is from the nomination that we wrote. Mrs. Vincent is our uber-parent with one Plainfield High School Central Campus graduate and a Plainfield South High School senior. She is also an active and dedicated parent volunteer and leader, public education activist, and most importantly, a communicator extraordinaire. Mrs. Vincent has served on and led each of the parent organizations at all her two sons' schools. She joined the district's CAPE organization 18 years ago. CAPE is a district-level senate for the nearly 40 District 202 parents and booster organizations. She has served as CAPE's president the last six years. CAPE was created as a communications bridge between district administration and parent groups, and over the years, its role has grown significantly. It also supports and judges the annual community homecoming parade, which we will have again next year, a huge undertaking featuring more than 100 entries, and presents an annual awards program that honors nearly 100 teachers, supporters, and parents. More importantly, though, Mrs. Vincent has become one of District 202's most active, firm, and well-informed voices, most especially through social media. She proactively and respectfully promotes the district and educates families about all manner of district news, issues, controversies, et cetera. Mrs. Vincent works closely with Board of Education members, the superintendent, and myself to make sure that she's sharing the most accurate information possible, which is no small feat on social media. Many times, she has helped avert, or at least minimize, the damage from online trolls and Louisville's going wild. We admire Mrs. Vincent for her tremendous commitment. We are grateful for the work she does on behalf of District 202 and for her wholehearted belief in the public school system. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Well, again, on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations, Betsy. An honor well deserved. So we'll continue on with 3.02 President's comments. A couple of other things to share. Welcoming back students. About 300 multi-need special education program students returned to in-person learning today as part of our plan to slowly and safely bring students and staff back to school. About 100 students opted to continue with remote learning. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank our administration, teachers, support staff, Technology Department, and Community Relations Department for preparing and communicating with our families and students, ensuring the safety of our schools, and providing appropriate technological supports and resources. No matter what else happens as we move forward, we must recognize the hard work being done to balance safety with learning for all of our students. This is a tremendously difficult task being done under very extraordinary circumstances. The strategic planning and community survey. Last week's family and staff, community members, received information about a community survey being done as part of the Board of Education's work to create a new five-year strategic plan. This survey is the first step of this important project. You will get several more reminders before the survey deadline of next Wednesday, November 4. Community members can also apply to be part of the Long Range Strategic Planning Committee, which will help further refine our goals as we move forward. And I want to thank everyone in advance for your input and participation, sharing your thoughts and feedback with the Board of Ed for this important project. It is very appreciated. And finally, thank you. Every year, the community supports our students, families, and staff in many thoughtful, creative ways, especially in times of need. This is obviously a very different year, and our need is also very different. We want to give a special thanks to Majid Glove and Safety from Romeoville for donating 200,000 surgical masks to District 202. They are making this donation with the help of their vending partner, AOK Tooling in Taiwan. 70% of the masks are size small, and 30% are size, are regular size, 140,000 student-size masks, 60,000 high school and adult-size masks. The donation is valued at $50,000, but their kindness is worth so much more. So thank you very much for that contribution as well. It's very much appreciated. All right. So moving on down to 4.01 Board Salutes. Do any of my board colleagues have anything this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to Bob McCallis for the grant that he worked on his staff. Talking about the lighting system they had on Plainfield Central High School this fall. Even by their night, the lighting is just tremendous, because before, you couldn't see your hand or your face on the part of that. I just want to say they did a great job.
Thank you, Bob. Very much appreciate that. Anyone else have anything? All right. Well, 4.02 Special Recognitions, we already did, as we were kind of jumping around a little bit. So moving on down to Item 5, Public Comment. We received three emails in advance of the 5:00 p.m. deadline this evening. Those three emails have been distributed to all of the Board of Education members. The three emails came from Angela Flintoff Holton, Melissa Berg, and Michelle Colby. We thank you, three, for sharing those with us. The text of those emails will also be shared as well as we, with the Board meeting record for this evening. So again, they've also been shared already with the Board of Ed, and we thank you and want to encourage the community to continue to share with us your thoughts and comments going forward. You can always reach a Board of Ed via the website, the district website, and we do appreciate hearing thoughts and comments of our community members. So Item 6 is the Consent Agenda. We have five items on the Consent Agenda this evening. I will read all five, but we will take all five as one vote. Item 6.01 is approval of the regular session minutes of September 28, 2020, and October 13 of 2020. 6.02 is approval of the destruction of audio recordings of District 202 Board of Education closed sessions from October 9, 2018, through March 18 of 2019. 6.03 is approval of closed session minutes from April 13, 2020, April 27, 2020, the first closed session of May 11, 2020, and September 28, 2020. And to pass a motion, they remain closed as recommended following a review by the Closed Session Minutes Committee. Item 6.04 is approval of the closed session minutes from second closed session of May 11, 2020, the May 26, 2020, the June 8, 2020, the June 22, 2020, the July 20, 2020, the July 27, 2020, the August 17, 2020, the September 14, 2020, and the special sessions of May 7, 2020, and July 23, 2020 meetings. And to pass a motion that they be opened as recommended following a review of the Closed Session Minutes Committee. And finally, 6.05, approval of the certified and non-certified personnel agendas, both as presented. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Bob's motion?
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie, call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Items passed. Thank you very much. So Item 7 is For Action Site and Finance Committee. We'll turn it over to Mr. Cook.
Mr. Kerberg, thank you very much. The Site and Finance Committee met last Wednesday, October 21. Committee is bringing six items to the Board for approval tonight. We do have a special guest, and Mr. Abregas, I'll let you do the introductions, and then we'll continue with the Site and Finance report.
Sure. Scott Conklin is here from Wipley, and he is going to talk us through the annual audit. And I know last week everybody got a copy of this, but if anybody needs one, I brought some extra list tonight.
All right. Thanks for having me. I hope everybody had a chance to take a look through the audit. So I didn't think I was going to interrupt and shoot them off to me. Along with the copy of the audit of the financial statements that we presented, we also fill out and prepare the annual financial report for ISPE. That's a regular report, that we will be filing with them after we get approval of the audit. In addition to the audit, everybody should have got a packet of required communication letters. We should go to everybody that's in the boardroom. So the board should have got a copy of the required communication letter. The report is similar in nature to prior years. There are no new government-related standards that want to do affect this year. So there's no change in how we're reporting for next year. We're changing the fiduciary standards. So we'll move to that for 2021, and we'll work with the district on what we need to do. It's going to be a different way we're going to report this to them. If that means anything to you. Like I mentioned, these financial statements follow all afterglow standard that are currently applicable. We did issue a unmodified opinion, and that basically means that we believe these financial statements are free. It's not a guarantee that any of these numbers are exactly posted in the correct account or whatever. We can't look at every single transaction from now on. It's absolute. But the physical essence that we believe based on auditing standards and the testing and verification that we get, we believe these are financial characteristics. If there's one section that I think you should probably pay particular attention to, it's the Management Discussion Analysis that starts on page four. This is sort of a narrative that goes over the highlights of what happened to the district and some of the changes from year over year. So starting on page four, the Management Discussion Analysis is a good place to start to get, just to get a basic overview of the transactions and the financial activity that happened during the year. Page 15 and 16 are your government-wide financial statements. These report equity of the net position amount. These take into account all funds squeezed together, also capitalizing, capitalizes the fixed asset sales, all the debt that's pertaining to the district. So as of June 30, 2020, the net position actually is reported at just over $143 million. That was, that was an increase of about 24 million dollars from the prior year. Overall, encompassing everything, including all the debt, the financial position of the district improved from 192001 to 2021. Actually, on page 17 is the balance sheet of the government. These are what's more, why people pay more attention to the day-to-day operations of the district. Because based on these funds, this is how you budget. This is how you levy. This is how you keep track of all your day-to-day operations of the district. As of June 30, 2020, the total cash and investment balances was just over $207 million. And the total fund balance was about just over $180 million. June is a high month for cash and investments, because you get the property taxes in May, May and June. So you're riding high usually in the cash position. Page 19 is the income statement of the district. Total revenues across all funds, just under $400 million, and public expenditures of $309 million for like a net income, positive net income of just over $90 million before any other operating financing sources or uses. We issued some bonds this year. So we actually told, net change in fund balance went up about $30 million year over year. Does anybody have any questions about the results of operations? I always like to bring up information that's provided in these. And this information comes from outside actuaries, but information on the pension, on the pension plans of the district and showing what's going on. There's information about them in the notes. There's some nice schedules here, required supplementary schedules, actually, starting on page 59 of the 59. And these cover the main pension fund, IMRF. IMRF, the net pension liability for the district. As of last year, about $8.99 liability for IMRF. That actually almost got cut in half over the year, because the IMRF did very well in the investment space, and they got a good, like, really good net investment income that lowered the liability for the prior year. The TRS pension information is on page 62, the net pension liability information. This net pension liability is the difference between the total pension liability and the assets that are, and the net assets that are in trust. So for Plainfield, the actual total net pension liability is just over $1 billion for all the TRS employees, certified employees of the districts. It's broken down into two pieces on a proportional share here. The district's share of the liabilities, about $14.6 million. And like I said, the state's proportion, which is the big proportion that's so much unfunded, is just over a billion dollars, and that's been staying steady the last three or four years, right around there. It only shows six years of data here. This will, because the standard was introduced six years ago. So this will, this will fill up to a 10-year schedule, and it'll done, so it'll show some history about what's going on with the pension. The other major liability to the district related to TRS is actually the THIS, the Teachers Health Insurance Security Fund. That's showing the liabilities on page 65 of the report. Now, the liability there is about $373 million. And that's broken down between the district's portion and the state's proportion. The district's is about $159 million. State's portion's about $215 million. The district and the state are the only ones that contribute to the fund. And the reason why this is so big, especially the district portion, is because there's never, there was never a trust set up for this. There was never any money put away like TRS was, where they put it away and invested it over years and years. This has always been set up as sort of a pay-as-you-go system, so the percentages that were withheld based on the creditable earnings were set up to just cover current costs. Well, this liability, that's the liability for all the employees, even the ones that started this year, up until the ones that are about to retire, and they project out those benefit payments using a discount rate. So it's in an actuarial. So that, and this is one where, I don't know, there potentially could be a shift in this one, or the, I think the state could actually start, they, I don't know what can stop them for actually adjusting the rate and potentially making, making, you know, making some headway on paying this down, because it is just based on a percentage of the credible earnings that you pay on all the certified salaries. Anybody have a questions as anything that I've talked about so far? There's one more regulatory piece. We're going to wrap up here in the next month or so, and that's we're going to have to file the data collection form in the Federal Clearing House. That's going to report all your federal expenditures, the money that you spent for federal purposes. So I'll work with, we'll get that set up and get that in, and we'll work with the district administration to get that, to get that filed within the next, within the next months or so. Like I mentioned, we'll submit the AFR, the regulatory report with ISPE electronically in the next couple of weeks after we get this report approved. Management Letter Comment. Basically, part of our testing is we always like to test because we could have the scenario that there potentially could be some, some risk is related to procurement cards, your P cards, the credit card. We always do a, just a little sample test of those things. It was not an exhaustive test, but we did notice in some transaction that some of the P card transactions were being charged with sales tax. And the district, when they make any purchases, even on P cards, is exempt from that. So I can't quantify that number, because like I said, we just noticed it in a small sample. So I don't know how big it would be, if it was extrapolated based on our small sample, but it's just something that, you know, maybe the policy wants to go after the people, or the people with the cards are reminded again that they should not be paying that sales tax on any of the purchases, because that'll save, save whatever that amount comes up to be. It's just extra money that you'd have for out-of-revenue. Apologize, we're a little bit later this year in giving the reports to you. And it was a little bit crazy year, and we got a little bit behind COVID, COVID factors. Glad we're finished up.
Well, thank you very much. Is any of the board have any questions? Anything?
I just want to say also, if there's anybody, if, and I'm not even questions right now, but if there is in the future, or any of the board members want to talk to me directly, Tony, you can pass my information along. I'd be glad to explain anything or field any questions that you may have about the audit process, results of operations, or, you know, how you and what's involved. I'd be glad, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on. We'll go over the Treasurers Report. We had a beginning cash and investment balance of $152,805,051. We had revenues of $96,255,162.47. We had expenditures of $28,107,88.18. We had an ending cash and investment balance of $820,147,820.25. We go on to 7.02, Approval and Acceptance Report, Treasurers Report. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes.
7.03, Approval of the Payment of $5,104,401.57. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes.
7.04, Approval of the First Amendment to Bid in Member Random Sale of a 40-acre Property at 127th Street and Kings Road. That is my motion.
Dave's motion? Second. Rod's second. And Tony, just hang on for a second. Charlie, sorry, Charlie. Did anyone have any questions about this amendment and any purposes behind it? Get Tony back in here to answer any questions if anyone has. Yeah. Yep. Let me, let me grab him real quick. Sorry, bad timing. He was saying goodbye to our auditor and-
Yeah, there's some paperwork I have to file when he's done, so.
No worries. No worries.
Tony, we got 7.04, Approval of the First Amendment to the Bid of Sale.
Okay.
And we had a question, just exactly what explanation.
Sure. What this does is, it doesn't change any of the price of the sale. It's just an amendment that we will receive a portion of the proceeds of the sale sooner than we originally had thought. So it just gives us a little bit of a cash flow influx of about $300,000.
Earlier than-
Earlier than we had thought. Yeah, though we know, we don't get any extra money. We just get the money sooner.
Is there any questions?
No, I didn't say. To be honest, that was, it was negotiated through our attorney who refrains it. And, yeah, but I know we're closing very soon. I'm the property believer.
Any other questions? All right. All right. Go ahead, Charlie. The roll.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes?
7.05 approval installations as submitted. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes?
7.06 approval of the acceptance of donations as submitted. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes?
7.07 approval of disposal of assets as submitted. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes?
Mr. Kerberg, that is all from Site Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Moving on down to item eight for Action Personnel Policy and Administration. Mrs. Drake?
Thanks, Kevin. So the PPA committee met this past Wednesday as well. Tom Hernandez started the meeting by sharing with the committee that Community Relations has been working with Administration and Personnel, Curriculum and Instruction, and Student Services to document the work being done in order to prepare our buildings for the eventual return of students to in-person learning. They've also rolled out a completely new website design, and they have worked with our board consultant, Dr. Robert Madonia, to craft and publish the five-year strategic plan survey to the community. I don't know if anybody saw the, I know they, they had a couple of videos of, of staff welcoming students to the buildings. I saw the one in particular from Michael Berger, and they're very, it was really well done. So kudos to the Community Relations Group. That being said, I'll move on to the business of the committee. 8.02 approval of policies to be placed and place them on 30-day public display. Policy 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure. Policy 2:265 Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Procedure. And Policy 7:345 Protection of Student Personal Information Online. That is my motion.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Up second. Charlie?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes?
And 8.03 approval of the proposed 2021, 2022 school year calendar. That is my motion.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Bob's second. Charlie?
Mr. Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes?
There's nothing else from the Personnel Policy Committee.
Thank you, Heather. All right. Item nine for Action Curriculum and Technology Committee. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Kerberg. Last Wednesday we met also, we had an opportunity for high school principals and for each of their goals and also what they felt was how they felt their whole life was going so far this year, what changes they thought we take care of. And again, taking a look at how we can, how they're helping their seniors with the college prep process for them and applications for colleges. So got an opportunity to hear how they're handling that for their seniors. For business, 8.02, the SIP plans, School Improvement Plans overview of the School Improvement Plans indicators and in the plans are based on the best practice and research. Plans are developed by the leadership teams of each school, including staff administration and parent input. At this time, we would like to submit for approval.
All right. That's Bob's motion.
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie?
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes?
The next item we have for approval, 8.03 purchase of Pairdeck for $33,350. Pairdeck transforms existing files into interactive presentations and substantive assessments. I'd like, I'd like to ask Dr. Woods if he would give a description or definition of what Pairdeck is, how it will benefit not only our staff, but our students.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yes, we're seeking approval for the purchase of Pairdeck for $33,335. It's a digital learning tool, and it's an application that allows teachers to use existing files, whether they're PDF, Word documents, PowerPoints, slideshows, or so on, so that students can interact with the content, so they can interact with the PDF. And it gives the teachers where they can see student responses in real time. And so then also they can collaborate. And the main thing that our staff use it for is to assess students and to have ongoing discussion that's there. It also allows teachers to collect data. And so the responses that students give, they can use that data to impact their lesson planning and instruction and where to go from there. Our students last year, we had about 3,600 students who used Pairdeck. Right now, we have over 16,000 students who have used Pairdeck from the start of the school year till now. There, we are using a free version. This is a premium version. It has, you know, a few more applications, but also the free version will, they will cap us out eventually. And so we won't be able to continue to use that service. And so we're requesting to purchase the premium version of Pairdeck that every student and every teacher could access.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Woods? Thank you, Dr. Appreciate that. Mr. Kerberg, I wanted to restate this motion. 9.03 approval of the Pairdeck for $33,350. Motion.
Bob's motion?
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie?
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
And Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes?
That is all for the Curriculum and Technology Committee, Mr. Kerberg.
All right. Thank you, Bob. All right. So we can jump on down to item 12 for Action Other. We have two items. 12.01 is approval of the 2021 graduation dates and times. All high school graduations will be held on Saturday, May 22 of 2021 as follows. Plainfield High School Central Campus at 10 a.m., Plainfield East High School at 10 a.m., Plainfield North High School at 7 p.m., and Plainfield How, Plainfield South High School at 7 p.m. I get a motion?
Motion.
Bob's motion?
Second.
Bob's second. Charlie?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes. And 12.02 is approval of the 2021 promotion dates and times. All promotions will be held on Thursday, May 27, 2021 as follows. At Plainfield East High School, John F. Kennedy at 7 p.m. At Plainfield North High School, Ira Jones at 5 p.m. And Heritage Grove at 7 p.m. At Plainfield South High School, Droudon Point at 5 p.m. And Ox Sable at 7 p.m. And at Plainfield High School Central Campus, Indian Trail at 5 p.m. And Timber Ridge at 7 p.m. Got a motion?
Motion.
Heather, Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes. And for those in the community, these dates will be promoted and, and publicized as well. So if any of you were trying to quickly write those down, don't worry about it. Plenty of opportunities for those to be communicated out from Mr. Hernandez and his team and make sure everyone gets those dates. Item 13.02 Board of Education Report. Rod, Wilco?
Thank you, Kevin. Wilco met on Tuesday, October 20. And some of the items that we approved were the Chapman and Cutler contract for annual disclosure compliance that we file with the state of Illinois. We also approved a snow removal contract, payment of bills in the amount of $291,582.12. And just so you know, our student enrollment for Wilco stands at 1,443 kids. The dates that we have our high schools attending Wilco are Plainfield Central on Mondays, Plainfield South on Tuesdays, Plainfield North on Wednesdays, and Plainfield East on Thursdays. And the makeup for students will be on Fridays. So that is my report. Mr. Kerberg?
Thank you, Rod. Any questions from the board?
Is there any opportunity, Rod, that might be our students get to spend more than one day at Wilco this year? Or is there any talk or plans?
Yeah, they're, they're going to review it like every four to six weeks because Valleyview just changed. They're going to remote until the end of, to the start of the second semester. So, but yeah, they're working to try to get kids in more.
Are they receiving dual credit for this?
Yes.
They are? You mean they're going one day a week or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Bob. Question? All right. Thank you, Rod. 13.03 update on the Return 20 Plan after April. We'll turn it over to you. And Lane, we can't hear you if you're talking.
All right. Hopefully now you can. I apologize for that. As all things with COVID, changes abound, and we've kind of put as a standing agenda item on the board agendas, an update on the Return 20 Plan. And that's a return not only to the beginning of the school year, but plans also to return to in-person or updates on the status of the format and platform that we're providing education. So with that being said, we do have a slideshow or a presentation here that I will run through that is somewhat similar, but updated from the last ones. That most recent update was October 13 at our last board meeting. So the next page, thank you, Dr. Wood, is our return plan that was presented on the 13th of October. The highlights included Tier One students, special education students in specific programs that you can see listed, did return to the building today. And that was our high needs special education students. It ended up being 300, give or take, and their parents who opted for them to return to in-person. Those students are pre-K through 12 programs, and they are scattered or located at 22 of our 30 school buildings. The second group coming back in a large, little bit larger group, just for a day of testing, will be seniors taking the, pardon me, SAT. And that is a second group that tomorrow on the 27th, for a portion of the day, will take the SAT. And that will be again spread out among our four high schools. The 30th, we end the first quarter. And at the last board meeting, we had talked about our next tier coming in person would be the week of November 2. Specifically targeted would be the November 5 date. And then later in the week of the 13th, we were able to get out some other dates, again, all tentative based upon other groups returning or other grade levels returning. The next slide will show us what the trend has been in COVID cases through the state of Illinois. And you can see that it's not trending in a very good way, for us at least. And those statistics are drawn from the Department of Health, as cited at the bottom, the Illinois Department of Public Health. And you can see that it's increased from the original decision to start to bring students back to now, again, a trend statewide that, that's not going real well or doesn't bode real well for us. Drilling down into Will County specifically, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Griffith, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, to talk about the next couple of slides and how they help guide us or how the Health Department recommends that we use those metrics. So Mrs. Griffith?
Thank you. So the, on the slide you're currently looking at, this is a slide that's provided to us by the Illinois Department of Public Health. These are metrics to help school districts determine what the community spread is looking like in their area specifically to help them make decisions about what learning should look like for students. And more specifically, whether or not we should consider bringing students back in person, or if we may need to make a pause in what our plan is for students, or if we may need to revert back. So as you can see on the statistics listed on the screen, there are four areas that we look at, and three of the four areas are currently listed as a substantial risk of community spread. So they typically are rated as either a minimal risk, a moderate risk, or a substantial risk. And over the past three to four weeks, we've seen the statistics increase from minimal to moderate to now substantial in test positivity, the number of new cases per 100,000, and more specifically, the number of youth cases. When this was done on Friday, the test positivity rate at that time was 8.9. The test positivity rate today is 9.8. So as you can see in the graphs on the left, the orange is letting us know that we are above what would be considered an area of risk for community spread in schools and in, in the community area. So then the next slide that we look at is more specifically what the statistics have looked like in terms of the positivity rate in Will County. So Glenn, if you could move to the next slide, thank you. You could see just over the past 10 days, the percentage of positivity rate has increased from 7.1% to 9.8%. When the board made the decision on September 23 to start phasing students back into in-person learning, the positivity rate was at 5.6%. So we've seen a huge increase in the community positivity rate for COVID since that decision was made and even over the past 10 days. And as many of you know, our region, specifically Region 7, is now in mitigation. And truly, Will County is at a higher rate of positivity than Kankakee County, which is the other county in our region. So in looking at all of this, it brings us to our next slide. And Dr. Abraham, I'm not sure if you would like me to address this or if you would like to chime in. But we are looking at, we are looking at several metrics to assist us in making our decisions. And as you can see on the board, the one I was just referencing is the first one, which is currently in red, which is a substantial warning for the number of cases in, in the county, as well as consecutive data points are all trending up as opposed to flat or trending down. Positively, we have a good supply of cleaning and disinfectant supplies. They are readily available, and we're able to get those refilled in a timely manner. An area that's in yellow is our PPE supplies. While we do have several weeks in stock, each day that passes, it becomes increasingly more difficult to get PPE as more school districts and more hospitals and healthcare providers are increasing the demand of that PPE. So it is something that we are concerned about being able to fill at a rate that we would need to. You could see that our substitute pool is also in red, meaning that the substitute pool is less than or equal to the number of substitutes needed for in-person learning. You could see that our substitute pool is also in red, meaning that the substitute pool is less than or equal to the number of substitutes needed for in-person learning. And finally, the last is in yellow, consistent guidance from Illinois Department of Public Health, ISVII and CDC, we continue to see frequent changes in the guidance given from the different groups on a weekly basis at minimum, sometimes several changes in one week, and the most recent change really looked at what would be considered the exposure time for someone that would be considered a close contact with someone that was diagnosed with COVID, and that most recent change would impact us substantially in the district.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffith, I appreciate that, and going on to the last slide here, State Board of Education has provided us in all districts with some guidance, talking about, you know, decisions that school districts make, options that, that we have or can pursue, all of those types of things, and one of them is, is an adaptive pause, and some may have heard this phrase from some of our neighboring districts, which have chosen to take on this adaptive pause, there are neighboring districts that have chosen to try to continue with in-person education at whatever point that they're in, it talks about how when, when school districts work with the county health department to determine if there is compelling evidence to adapt a pause, then it's prudent for us to take that route, and that's where we're at right now. The long and the short of it is that this allows us time to assess the data, continue to see where it's going in the environment of COVID nineteen, so we're going to implement that approach at this point in time, we're going to take the next ten to fourteen days to see where the statistics go, see what the environment is, continue to monitor all, all things of the metrics that we use, also the metrics coming out of the county, the, the group of high needs special education students will continue on the schedule that they have at this point in time, all other following groups that we put out the tentative timelines last week are going to be put on hold or paused until we can get a better handle on the data and try to make sure that it's more consistent. So that is the update, as much as I don't like to provide that at this time, no one wants students back more than us, it's a community health issue, we're constantly trying to weigh that with the issues with remote learning, no one would say that remote learning always is better than a teacher in the classroom with students in the classroom, but again, this is a little bit larger, in some ways, a lot larger issue than just in-classroom learning or education, it's also a community health issue. So with that, I am going to open it up to the Board of Education for any questions that they have of myself or the Assistant Superintendents.
Thank you, Dr. Avril and team, appreciate the update as always, and I will ask the Board of Ed if there are questions or comments that anyone wants to ask the administration or share.
I would like to point out that we do provide the Board of Education the metrics on a weekly basis and continually update the Board of Education and the community themselves, at any time can go to the Will County Health Department website, or the Illinois Department Public of Health website, or the Illinois State Board of Ed website to see the metrics as they progress and as they pertain to schools.
Only thing I can add also is that I did leave out Kendall County, we do, a portion of our district is in Kendall County, the positivity rate in Kendall County is currently nine point two percent, so it is parallel to, to what we're seeing in Will County, about ten days ago, it was at seven point two percent, and today is, it is at nine point two, so both counties where our school districts resides is above the eight percent level.
Yes, just to clarify that a little bit, District two oh two is made up from, of students who reside or families who reside in Will County and Kendall County, our region that the state or the governor has us in is Will County and Kankakee County, so, you know, the K's and the Kendall and the Kankakee sometimes can get a little bit of confusing, confusing, out of our total student population, give or take about two thousand of our students reside in Kendall County.
Thanks, Lane Amina. All right, again, questions for the administration, the board? All right, and, and Lane, you touched upon this, but in terms of keeping the board apprised of, you know, the, the metrics and, and things, so, you know, going forward, your next steps with this would be what, can you clarify that a little bit more for us?
Well, it will be to continue to look at this, at the data, and see when we can re-implement the starting of the timelines, and then giving parents and surveying the groups of students coming back, actually surveying their parents, whether they wish for remote learning or wish to return in-person, we've received feedback from quite a few parents who we had surveyed, when they filled out the survey for the next group coming in of students, you know, two weeks ago, it was lower than what it was, and as it's creeped up, we've seen more and more folks or parents wish to change their election of whether their student comes in person or stays in remote, we will continue to update through Community Relations and the Board of Education and myself and communications to parents, whether we can re-implement and start the timelines again, no one wants students more in-person than the educators, we all do, we know the value, but also, again, we're trying to weigh the community health part of things with this and, and make a balanced and, and informed decision, so we will continue to update the public, the parents, as much as we can, even if it's to just to say, you know, we're continuing to study things, and we're continuing in that adaptive pause.
Thank you. All right, well, if there are no other comments or questions, we will move on, but thank you, and, you know, look forward to, again, keeping a, a prize of this, and ideally being able to move to the next phase of returning more of our students, once we deem that it's safe, and we can do that in a healthy and safe environment. We have no unfinished or new business, so item sixteen point zero one is Freedom of Information Request Status, Dr. Avril?
We have received three Freedom of Information requests since last Board of Education meeting, number one from Helen Renee Oliver of Quadrenet for materials regarding the district's postage meter lease, that was received October eighth due October sixteen, completed October thirteenth, number two, Carrie Fallgren, a community member for materials regarding legal services and emails between specific community member and staff, that was received October nineteen due October twenty-six, that is in process, number three, Vince SB, a reporter for local labs for materials regarding guest speaker contracts, that was received October nineteen due October twenty-six, and that is in process.
Thank you, sir, and seventeen point zero one, announcements and scheduled activities?
Tuesday is November third, we have no school because of Election Day, so we encourage everyone to vote and exercise that right and ability, the next Board of Education meeting will be held remotely on Monday, November ninth, twenty twenty, and six thirty for closed session, seven thirty for public session.
Thank you, we will not have a second closed session, so looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Heather?
Second.
Mike, second, Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, we are adjourned, thank you all very much, and have a wonderful evening.